Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June 3rd. First presentation we have is the annual presentation from the CNPO. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Liz Burke. I'm the MPO Manager for the Corridor MPO. And MPOs are Transportation Policy Making Boards that are required by both federal and Iowa law. So ours is called the Corridor MPO Policy Board. And it represents, we represent Cedar Rapids, Ely, Fairfax, Hiawatha, Lynn County, Marion, Palo, and Robbins. So those are our member communities. They pay, Marion pays about $100,000 a year in local dues. That is matched at 80% with federal funds for the salary for myself and then two other planners. And then we also are kind of a pass through for federal funding for regional transportation projects and facilitating those projects, coordinating those projects between the various jurisdictions in our metro area. So this is the Corridor MPO's planning boundary. And again, the communities that I mentioned are a part of the MPO membership. So we provide short and long term transportation planning. And like I said, the federal transportation funding, we have three different types of funding. They can go mainly towards rail projects, road project, excuse me, not rail, trail projects, road projects, and transit. We also provide lots of other planning services. But the main thing is the transportation funding. So if you think about all the projects that any community in the region wants to complete, as far as transportation goes, the MPO takes the projects that are regional in nature and puts them into our long range plan. And then we go through a process to prioritize those projects based on how much funding we expect to get from the federal government. And then those become projects that are then eligible for our Transportation Improvement Program Funds. And that is, those are the grants that Marion and all of our other member communities can receive for those road, trail, and transit projects. So that's a high level overview of the MPO. Happy to take any questions, but thanks to Marion for participating in the Regional Corridor MPO Policy Board.
Thank you. Any questions for this? Go ahead.
Well, Liz, maybe I said this last year, but for you and the other members, staff members of the MPO, I really appreciate the level of coordination that you do across all of the jurisdictions. You do that not only with those of us that are on the policy board or the executive committee, but the coordination with the technical advisory committee is, I mean, that all shapes the total understanding of what we're trying to get done within the MPO's area of coverage. So I just want to say thank you for the work that you all do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Liz, what is the, on an annual basis, average, what is the amount of money that gets funded through the CNPO?
It's about $8 million a year.
$8 million a year?
Hmm.
Okay.
Did you? Go ahead.
What from our perspective as a community can we be doing better? What could we, what do we do well? What do you see as some challenges that are coming forward that we should be aware of that are going to impact? And I'm sure there's a long list, but having dealt with some of these in the past, I was just kind of curious on thoughts.
In terms of Marion specifically?
Marion and/or?
Or our region?
Yeah, region in general.
I mean, obviously, we can't control the amount of funding we get, but what we can do is leverage those funds and go after discretionary grants to bring more money into our communities. And that's something we've been really pushing both for road projects and trail projects in the area. The MPO and the cities are going to have the amount of money that they get through their taxes. But whatever we can leverage to bring into the community is certainly something that we're working really hard to do. Challenges, the federal government right now is a challenge in terms of things are constantly in flux. But again, that's not something necessarily we can control.
Do you see any changes in allocation formulas or anything else on the horizon from the federal to state? Or how that's coming with the changes with different types of fuel, different types of vehicles? And how things have been calculated in the past? Do we see that there could be changes on that? Or even our road system funding across the country?
I mean, never say never, but the funding sources have pretty much stayed the same through the past 60-ish years. A new funding source, carbon reduction programming, was added like six years ago. And we don't expect anything to happen with that, those funds. Congress pretty much adds funding to transportation legislation. Historically, they haven't taken any away, but again, who knows right now.
So did you say the MPO wants to be more proactive about going after discretionary grants, but we haven't to date? Or have we? We have?
But that's one thing that we can do to bring more dollars into our area. We can't control the amount that the MPO gets from the feds. But if we can be competitive in those discretionary grants, that will help bring more structure funding into our area.
Okay, so we do do that. You do do that. Okay. Oh, go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, this, maybe this is too much political speak, but I'm just, if you can't comment, we won't comment. How much of an impact does the seniority of our federal delegation have on the amount of, and their appointments have on the funding that we receive? Or is it completely formula based?
For the MPO specifically, it's completely formula funding for those discretionary grants that I'm talking about. It's my personal opinion that the legislators have a lot more. The longer they've been there, you know?
Yeah, the seniority does play in.
Yep, exactly.
I can add maybe just a little in regards to the discretionary dollars. So one of the things that we're doing when we go into our DC fly-in trip next week, actually. It's hard to believe that's going to be here already. We have actually put a sheet together that we are going to visit with each of our federal legislators about those discretionary dollars that we've applied for specifically to Tower Terrace Road. But what is that reason of not being able to be funded? And so we're going to walk them through that. And I think that kind of goes to maybe some of your question is, you know, how do we get that in front of them? How do they actually see the grant, those grant opportunities that we have applied for? For a very, very regional project that we know has made it to the top and sat on the secretary's desk, but just didn't, they ran out of dollars. So those types of things are going to be very much a conversation that we'll have at the DC level.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do for the region. And thanks to everyone in our team who represents us at the MPO level. I know it takes a lot of time. Next item is a discussion regarding proposed update, updated fee schedule for Public Works. Mike?
Yep, so we're going to talk a lot of numbers. So as we go, if you guys have questions, stop me and we'll talk through it. Some of our fees, including the Engineering Division, have not been updated since 2008. So they need a refresh. All right, so first I'm going to start with the Engineering Division fees, kind of what were removed, what we adjusted, or what we're adding. And I'll do the same thing with Public Works. But again, if you got questions, please ask, so I can help give more information. So project plans, one good thing that did come out of COVID was we used to print 11 by 17 plans and project manuals and printed all those and then gave them to contractors that then bid on our documents. We now give them a link to OneDrive and they can download and print as much as they want. So we don't need to charge that $25 fee because our plans are electronic. And then what we did was, we have a lot of different right-of-way permits. So there's a driveway permit, there's a sump pump permit, there's a sanitary permit. Instead, we consolidated that into just a right-of-way permit, make it simple for everybody that way. So the right-of-way or temp encroachment is what we're calling it. Used to be $30. We're recommending that we go to $40 and then additional $10 if they're messing with the curb. So an example would be, I want to replace my driveway, so that's $40. But the curb and gutter in front of my driveway is also spalling and falling apart, and I want to fix that at the same time. Some of the old driveways are actually built that way where they're tied into the street. And so that extra $10 is because I'm getting into the street. It's a separate inspection we have to do. So that's what we're recommending for that. And erosion control minor, we're recommending going from 25 to 100. Erosion control major, 100 to 250. A sewer connection, 50 to 100. Plan improvements review for engineering. So this would be, I'm building a subdivision and I have my construction plans and I want Darren to review them. So we're saying if it's an acre less, it's $200 for that review. If it's over an acre, it's $400 per review. It used to be $100 each time you had to review it. So the good engineers, maybe he reviewed it one time, they made the comments and got a revision. Other ones, he maybe reviewed it five times. And then the stormwater credit application, so that ERU bill that they get on their water bill. For most residents, that's a standard amount, but say you're a Walmart or a bigger location and you want to apply for some credits that you feel you have. And so we're recommending that go from 50 to 100 because it takes more time to review that, to get that credit. Any questions on any of those? All right, and then a permanent encroachment, that would be something that is new. So let's say, as a homeowner, I want to install an irrigation system, but I want to put it in the right-of-way between the sidewalk and the curb so that portion is irrigated as well. So that part isn't brown and the rest of my grass is green. So we would do a permanent encroachment and hold harmless for $50. So if we have to come through and put a drain tile or fix our storm sewer, sanitary sewer, basically goes back on the homeowner that they need to then repair that because they put it on city property. Is what we're recommending for that. So Public Works fees, so ones that were moved. So commercial sale of compost or wood chips. I don't know what happened prior to me being over there. But as far as that I know, we have never sold compost or wood chips because we can't keep up with the demand we have for our residents. So we just took it out of there since we're not selling it anyways and we're just reserving it for residents. There used to be a private hauler for solid waste, so like ABC, and we would make them pay a fee for that. A couple of them would get the permit, but not everybody. So it's just kind of, if we have an issue with them, we can figure out who's picking up trash at a certain location and we can take care of it that way. There's no reason to go through extra work to have a private hauler permit. And the other one was snow plowers for hire, so in the wintertime, so they're not pushing the snow out in the street or across the street. Again, we can go to the property owner, we can find out who's pushing the snow for you. And we can address it that way rather than go through this extra fee. So we're recommending that those three all go away. Some adjustments, and some of these are easy. So the first one, equipment. So we used to have a price for every piece of equipment that we had out there. And so keeping up with that is a lot of work. So our recommendation is just use the FEMA rate table and then adding our labor. So our hourly rate for the guy that's in the piece of equipment driving it, fuel. But using that FEMA rate, and then that helps if we were to have another disaster, we're using the FEMA rate already. And we're not trying to say why our rate's different than the FEMA rate. The traffic in barricades is one that is a significant change, so we'll walk through this one a little bit. So basically, what we currently do would be the A-frames that you see on the left side with the blue. And we would just have those as a refundable deposit. So I'm going to have a block party, I go to Public Works, I pick them up, throw them in the back of my truck. I pay $25. I bring them back after we have the block party and I get the $25 back. These don't meet any kind of traffic safety requirements, and so that opens up the city for liability. So we did a lot of checking with other comparables. And so what we're recommending is $250 a day for a Class 3 barricade, which is what you see on the right. That actually has the reflectivity and the requirements that you need to have to close that. $150 delivery cost, and that's to get it and to bring it back. Most vehicles, that can't fit in, even the back of my truck, that won't fit in the back there without strapping it down and having it hang off the edge. And then if they were to lose them, then a $400 replacement cost. So I know that's a pretty big jump from what we're doing today to what we're proposing to do. But we feel that's the right way to do it so that we're not putting the city at additional liability. A lot of the cities that we talked to said they don't even do it. They make the property owners that are having, say, a block party, hire a company to come in and set up the traffic control for them.
Question, Mike. So if somebody has, wants to have a block party and they get that permit issued, are they required to put in some street barricades like this? Is that part of the requirement?
Yeah, so it'd be this one or the next slide where we're going to talk about cones. So we have a slightly intermediate, but it's still a higher price.
Okay.
Go ahead. Mike, you know, the Public Work fees that you've proposed, you know, overall, I understand the basis for those a little bit better. But have we benchmarked these against our comparables?
Like I said, a lot of comparables won't even do this.
Okay, that's informative.
Yeah, but with the, sorry, Councilman Harper, so for the fees, when we've been going through the fee adjustments for the different departments, we will take a look at our comparables and compare where they're at. So the last round, I think we did building. We'll take a look at our comparables to see how do we stack up. There's a next iteration to that. We're not there yet in terms of cost recovery to make sure we are fully capturing our costs. But we don't, we don't have the KPIs yet, the performance metrics to really fully understand that now. So it is truly based on comparable data.
So you read my mind because part of my question was going to be, does that $150 delivery cost represent the cost of our equipment that we use to deliver it as well as labor? Anyway, so I understand there's going to be some refinement of this.
Yeah, and there are some, and I'm just speaking holistically. I'll let Mike continue on. But as we, I mean, this has been part of our revamping of the budget process for the last couple of years, systematically going through the departments and updating the, modernizing the fees, as Mike said, 2008 for this one, for this category. But holistically, there are going to be some where we truly do know the costs and some where we just have to really benchmark it. We, as an organization, are evolving and growing up and kind of putting these processes and structures in place to better understand our time and efforts. And I do think that we'll be, next couple of rounds, we'll be having community development come back. And I think we'll have a little bit more, there are some where we do have a better understanding on the planning side, but it's still an evolving process. But at least we're getting to a point now where we're correcting some of these issues and bringing it up to modern day standards.
Gage?
Yeah, what different categories of groups or organizations or people are renting these barricades? And like, how often are those getting rented?
I don't have those exact numbers, but I can tell you, we do have quite a few hold harmless. So say somebody has a graduation party and they want to block off the street, or the neighborhood just wants to have an HOA party, they can do that. And it's just for safety and legality, the A-frames just don't do it.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. My thinking just goes to, I understand the need for the fees and the cost based off equipment and time and resources used. My thinking goes to, you know, like, if there's like a certain organization using it, like a private organization or a block party versus like a nonprofit needing to do something for an event. Are there different rates we could think about for different categories of business? And then I guess my overall big picture question, which I could probably wait to ask, but I'll ask now, is kind of what is our future plan in looking at this so that we don't wait almost 20 years to do it again?
This is part of our annual thing that we do every year now.
Good to know.
Randy?
Mike, do we have, I think I know the answer to this one, but do we, do they make a smaller Class 3 that would be more combinating for transport by pickup truck? Or are we selecting an item because it would be more utilized in our inventory? And we're renting out of that to make it more cost prohibitive?
So let's just go ahead and go to the next slide, because this is our intermediate that we came up with, and that's traffic cones. So traffic cones, $25 per day per cone. They have to have a minimum four per closure. So if you're closing two ends of the street, there's eight cones that you have to do. So that would be able to transport in most vehicles. There, we're still offering the $75 delivery that's optional, so if they want to come get them themselves. But it is non-refundable and then a $400 replacement cost if those go missing. So we are doing it in between.
All right, thanks.
The replacement cost is for each cone or for?
The replacement cost would be for the A that they're doing.
Go ahead.
Another maybe dumb question here. When it comes to like the safety, now we talked about the safety of the other barricades. What's the difference, like, how are cones more safe than like the blue barricades?
But these are at least reflective.
Oh, okay.
See. Go ahead, Will.
Back to the other slide. So my question, I guess, would be with like street closure on 7th for Arts Festival markets rendezvous this weekend. Is that fee also being charged to the people that are?
So not this year, but next year, yes. We are, that's why we're keeping track of our time so that we know. So next year, and that's something that we've talked about, is giving the nonprofits a discount on that. But that's something that we're working through.
And is that $250 per barricade? So if you need to close the street, you need four of them, so you're $1,000.
Well, for 7th Avenue, you need about 20 of those.
Well, for more than, yeah, that's true. So that's going to be very expensive to close 7th Avenue for any event.
That's, but in that case, we're doing it a little differently. But that's why we're looking at the entire picture. So this is more for the HOAs or the block parties than closing 7th Avenue. That's a whole different topic.
And that's not going to be tonight, that's going to be in the future.
Okay, you have something?
Do we have more slides we're going to go through? Because I can wait till the end.
I have a few more, I think.
I'll wait till then.
So then a couple more, so solid waste, so cart return cleaning fee. So let's say that you opted into yard waste and then you decide you no longer want the yard waste option and you bring your container back to us. If it's not clean, then we have to clean it because we have to redistribute that out to another resident. And it's not very polite to give them a dirty container. So if they don't clean it, then we do, so charging them $25 to clean that container. And then the last one is actually one that we've got a lot of requests for. So I did not put my yard waste out by 7:00 AM. Garbage truck drove by, I call and I say, I didn't get it out until 8:00. Will you come back and pick up my garbage for $25? Yes. That is low, that does not cost recover, but that is what our comparables also do. But at least it gives them an option if they can't go to the landfill, their container's full, they can't wait a week. Solid waste, special collections. So yard waste, so I cut down a tree and I want Public Works to come pick it up. $60 for the first 15 minutes and then $40 for each additional 15 minutes. Generally, we can get done in 15 minutes unless you have a lot in your front yard. And then solid waste, special collections pickup. So I cleaned out my garage. I have a pile of stuff that I want to go to the dump, but I don't have a truck, so I want to get rid of it. So it's, we're recommending it go from $40 for the first 15 minutes to $60 for the first 15 minutes and then $40 additional. And then we had a whole list of items that are extra, like mattresses, electronics, appliances that the landfill charges us for. But rather than list all those individually, we're just using their rate table and charging what they charge us. So just next steps, July 1st, this comes to council for consideration. And then, I don't know if it's the next meeting, but Planning Division will be coming with their proposed fees for council consideration. So I know, Councilman Menzger.
Go ahead. Question.
This goes way back to the beginning on the different fees for, you know, some of the first slides. What is the, what is the percentage of commercial versus residential that are paying most of these fees?
I would say commercial or residential, just off the top of my head, but I don't, I don't, I haven't run those numbers. But we have more residential permits being pulled than commercial.
And they're like by a resident, not a builder who's building residential housing?
I would say there it varies. So if I hire ABC Contracting to come in, they may pull the permit because then we want to make sure they're licensed and bonded to protect the resident. But if I feel like I can do it myself, I can pull the permit as well.
Okay. So I'm thinking here as we're talking, so we're not going to see this, to vote on it, until we are seeing comparables or having future discussion, right? This is a, this is a preliminary, this doesn't come on Thursday for a vote or something. This is July.
Yep, but I wanted to go ahead and give that information so you guys could think about it. If there's more information you wanted me to provide or anything for that July meeting. But it's, that July table is all the fees.
So I mean, some of these I totally get, and I mean, you know, not getting garbage out on time. And gosh, I think we got caught on yard waste one day a couple of weeks ago. So I totally understand some of that. Some of these I look at and I, it's not that the amounts, I'd like to see what our comparables are. And I'd like to also see some of the areas around us. I just, I feel like, I don't know. We've, we've asked a lot of our residents and our community, we've raised a lot of different fees. We've, we've got new trucks and hauling, you know, waste. And we've got some other votes coming up potentially, and I, I'm just cautious. I just, I don't want it to feel like, I've heard, I've heard a lot of people say, by the time I get my water bill, it's just crazy. I mean, this is going up and taxes are going up. And so I'm just cautious that we're just throwing one more thing on it and I fuel the fire. And I know you're going to tell me that, that it's going up everywhere, but.
No, no. Wanted to clarify, so we can, as part between this round of council meetings and the next round, we can respond back and we'll share any of the comparable data that we have. This is going to be scheduled for not Thursday, but the following round. Rachel, what date's 19th? Is when council would see it next for approval to go into effect July 1st to start with the new fiscal year. The... Please note, my comments are not meant to sound like a wet blanket. They're just, just for the record, the, the, just want to, everybody keep in mind, the last time these fees were touched was 2008. So it has been a long time. Certainly understand exactly everything that you're mentioning, Councilman Menzger, about the impact to our residents. I would say that a lot of these are user-based, so it's not like with, like with garbage services or with the property taxes where it's applied to everybody for the entire service. This is, if you are using that service, this is the, this would be the recommended rate. And then I would conclude that if there are rates that council's not comfortable with, we would welcome that feedback. These are recommendations to present for you.
However, his windows are closed.
Running now, but, but you know, when, when, after tonight's meeting, we'll send a follow-up. And if there's any sort of feedback from council, we really, like, let's, let's not touch this one now. Like, that's the feedback that we need and then we can adopt, we can, we can amend it and then we can do the further. Like, that's the feedback that we need and then we can adopt, we can, we can amend it and then we can do the further follow-up later. It's been since two thousand eight that we've had them updated. Any sort of adjustment is gonna be progress and if we need to come back and do some additional research or hold off, that's, that's entirely up to council. So we welcome that feedback. We'll get you the follow-up info so you can provide us that.
Okay, Grant, and then Steve.
Yeah, maybe using the, um, street barricades as the example. It, it seems to me it might be logical, since this is such a large change in, uh, pricing, uh, that we select some of these maybe to ramp them in over a year or two. And, you know, obviously the safety, uh, the visibility, um, of the, um, the three-tiered barricade um, is, the, the class three barricade is, uh, superior to the other ones, the blue ones. I just think maybe trying to, this and several others that might have a a large cost differential from what they were to what they, what we desire them to be, ramp them in over a logical period of time.
Yeah, my, my comment about the cones, when I first saw this number here for the traffic barricades, that would just absolutely shock the heck out of me. But we have an option with the cones, which is a little more reasonable, which I'm sure everybody's gonna pick. I mean, the biggest challenge we have here is we have a sixteen-year price increase. And I was on a board a number of years ago that Sarah is very familiar with, that did the same thing. And they waited a lot of years, did a big increase, and I said, that's exactly the wrong thing to do. So now we're in a situation where we do maybe small increases, if any, on a year-to-year basis. So my, but my question is, and you, we may not have the answer. And that is, if we have other fees in other areas that have that long of a period of time, I don't know if we're caught up on everything at this point in time with fees. But if there's another area that's way behind, I would sure as heck suggest we get that going faster than waiting another period of time. So.
I say, Steve, you're absolutely correct. I mean, we have put this on our, uh, projects in motion. This is, we've been going through all of the departments. I believe it's next council meeting, correct? That we will be bringing forth the last department that we have not yet touched, and that's planning. It looks like Kim's queued up and ready to speak, so I'll pause there.
Yes, that, that should be the last, um, the, the last for us to touch at least once. And then we'll, uh, and this will be all, all solely planning. Um, and we will be looking at some of those, uh, some other options, uh, that we don't currently have in place for maybe some of those bigger developments. Other communities may call it an escrow account and you may have heard of that before. So that's something that we'll kind of explore with you as well, along with just looking at uh, fees and other things that we do that we haven't charged for in the past, but our comparable cities have and do charge for things. Um, so in, on the planning side, we've, we've done a lot that really isn't being charged for. Um, as far as when it comes to time and and the length of time.
And I was just going to add, this was part of our, uh, strategic approach of making sure that the appropriate parties are paying for the appropriate services so that we're not subsidizing with property taxes or utility fees on things that are only impacting the individual. And then as far as the comment about it's been a number of years on these. This is now part of an annual process that we are going to have that schedule of fees reviewed and updated annually. And the reason why it's timed so that it comes into effect July one is because that's part of that annual budget process. And we need it at least updated at that point for utility fees to take effect as of seven one.
So when we hit July one, then we will be totally caught up with all fees being updated across the board with throughout all departments.
I will add a caveat on there. We'll say depending on how the conversation with planning, because we are presenting to City Council at the next set planning. So if council needs more time, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, and just to add another little clarification, but I mean, it's gonna be subject to we'll, we'll have the recommendation, so we would have gone through everything. And so we'll, the feedback from council and what ultimately gets approved, some might, and if council's okay with that, we're okay with that. Uh, so some, some fees might still be pre-two thousand twenty-five levels based on the council direction.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anything else on that, on this one? Do you have the next one, Mike?
Do. I got backup on this one. All right, so as, uh, Councilman Jensen brought up last time, we have some money for some transit stops. So we want to go through, um, our thought process on what stops we're proposing we improve. Um, so just kind of dive in here. Again, if you've got questions, please let me know. Um, so through the NPO, so Liz was up here talking about that. So we did receive three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the CNPO. Um, we're proposing hard improvements of four hundred thousand dollars for our eighty-twenty split. Um, and what we're looking at today is to make sure that council concurs with our recommendation or if there's things you want to change. Because basically what we want to do is we then want to start the NEPA or environmental process on these stops. So once we say we're gonna have a stop, say at Hy-Vee, and that, that's everyone's in agreement that we're gonna have one there. If we do the NEPA study and you decide, no, I don't want it at Hy-Vee, I want it half a mile away. Let's start the NEPA process over. So we want to get alignment on that, on where the stops are. So what we have today is we have forty-nine transit stops within the city of Marion. Four have a concrete pad, a bench, and a shelter. One has a concrete pad and a bench. And forty-four are signs only that just say bus stop. So that might mean you're standing in a grass area, uh, with nothing but a sign.
Or a foot of snow?
Yes. Um, so what we looked at to try and determine what recommendation for council, we looked at stops that generate greater than one thousand users per year. What space is available in the right of way? So for example, if there's a sidewalk and a curb, but the sidewalk is at the curb, we obviously can't put a bus stop there. Um, and then location, is it commercial, residential, or private? So Walmart, for example, has a lot of usage, but that's private property. And we can't spend federal or state money on a private location. Residential, most of the time when you're in residential neighborhood, they don't necessarily want a bus stop in their front yard. And so looking more at those commercial areas for those locations. So our proposal is to convert fourteen locations that are currently sign-only locations to have a concrete pad, a bench, and a shelter. And convert one of them that is assigned only to a concrete pad and bench. But that one won't have a shelter due to space, um, restrictions on that. So again, we have four hundred thousand dollars in hard costs is our estimation. Thirty-two thousand in environmental reviews. That's why we want to make sure that we have concurrence on what we're proposing for locations, so we're not spending money to move those locations. And then obviously we'll have staff time to design and administrate it. Um, and we'll have to follow a new DOT CAD template because we're bidding it through the DOT on this project. So now I'm gonna kind of go into the stops. So as we do this, if you have questions, please let me know. This is the, the bus stop that we're looking at. This is the one on Twix Town Road that we already have in the city. One thing, we believe, we found one that's very similar to this. So there's new requirements. So it used to be, um, for steel, it had to be buy America Steel. With the new administration, it's build and buy America. So we believe we found a vendor that's very close to this, that meets those requirements. But should that change, the requirements change, it may not look exactly like this, but it's a pretty plain uh, black shelter, glass, and it has a bench and a trash enclosure. So that's what we're proposing for that. So again, if, I know it's a little hard to see on this, but this is your, the yellow line is the actual bus route going through Marion. And now we're gonna zoom in to some areas. All right, so this is looking at the north side of town. So if you look at the ones that have the blue around the stop, which is gonna be Hy-Vee, that's the one that we're recommending, just the bench. And the reason being is there just is not enough room to get a shelter in there as well. But we have a high usage at Hy-Vee, so we feel that having at least a pad and a bench is a drastic improvement than standing in the grass.
And so I guess I'd have to see where it's located there on the, on the property exactly, but but it's in, it's in the public right of way.
Yep.
And there's not enough room and we can't work with Hy-Vee to get.
The major issue is it's on the north side of the driveway of Hy-Vee. And it's a site visibility issue if you're leaving the west side going on the thirty-fifth and you're looking north at traffic. If you put one of these shelters there, the visibility, I fear is gonna be blocked. And we're gonna get complaints that we're gonna have to remove it right away after because you can't see. The option would be to move it way north down the hill. And that's not where people want to go to get in and out of it when we talk.
Can it be set back further completely on Hy-Vee property?
I believe there's a retaining wall there when I was back there and it dropped off to where the Hy-Vee drop and all the rest of that is when we were going through everything. So the, the option that I saw to put one in is to move it north. And that's what my fear was, is that we're moving it to the spot that people don't want to use. So that's what we talked about as committee. There's a couple of other ones that he'll get to too, that we're sliding it a little bit where we could. And that one, it just didn't appear to be that much of a spot that we could make it work out. Even if we moved it to the south side of the driveway, then it was blocking it for people looking south, unfortunately. It's just a big curve there that's difficult to see around.
Okay. Otherwise, uh, so we'll just take that stop and drive the route. So then we're in the residential neighborhood. So this is next to the pool. So we're not planning any at the existing pool. Then we're going down McGowan, again, not improving anything. Going north on Twenty-Fourth Street and then west on Twenty-Ninth Avenue. And we are proposing to put one next to Lenmar's Campus. Now this has the green circle around it, which means concrete pad, bus shelter, um, and a bench. So we are recommending putting one there. That one also is a little tight, but we feel we can work with the school district with the partnership that we have and get that. And that's on at least a public property, even though it's school property. So that's a location that we're recommending. Um, we do have an existing one on Azure, but that already has the shelter. So we're not proposing and doing anything with that one and leaving that one alone. Um, then as you cross the bridge, there's the one at McGowan. We're not proposing any improvements. And then the one that's north of Central and Tenth Avenue, we're not recommending any improvements. And then this one down here, as you get down to, next to the bank, we are recommending there to have a, um, shelter, concrete pad, and bench at that location. And then it'll be on Tenth, Ninth, Eighth, Eighth.
Eighth Street.
Eighth Street. Um, and then obviously the, the bus route continues Twix Town Road, but we'll stay on this map. So coming back on Sixth Avenue, right next to the, the Heritage Center, um, putting one there um, because of the high usage there. And then at Twenty-Second and Sixth. And at Thirty-First and Sixth. Thirty-Fifth and Sixth. And then close to the fire station on Sixth off Cat's Drive there. So those are the ones that we're proposing on the north side. Are there any there that you would like to talk about further?
Right, well, I, as I initially looked at this, Mike, and, um, others have already commented, the merit, commented on it about Hy-Vee. That seemed to be the one that was, you know, I, I'm kind of hoping there's a creative solution there. And I think there's obviously some topographic constraints that we have to work around. I don't know, I just, you know, and I, I heard you loud and clear when you said that we can't use federal monies on private, um, property. And so I'm just wondering if there isn't some kind of a, a solution that A, we can convert private to public and then also resolve the topographic or elevation constraint, resolve that issue so that we can ultimately at some point in time get a shelter there because it, it's just kind of troublesome to me to see people who require public transportation standing there with their cart or their whatever. Uh, and, you know, be faced with, uh, perhaps having groceries get ruined because all of a sudden they're caught in a downpour.
Yeah, so the option is there to move the bus shelter forty or fifty feet north. The Hy-Vee frontage is pretty long along there and that would make it so you could see out of there. Um, the discussion was, uh, people tend to want to stand close to where they're gonna get in and out. But if, if the council feels like moving that north, that people would use it up there, I know the bus stop said or the, the transit said that they would move in wherever we saw fit, if we thought it would work out. And maybe if that's how the council feels, I don't have any issue changing that and trying to make it, it might up our estimate. Well, will up our estimate a little bit, but it's an estimate at this point anyway. You know, and, um, when we're just doing a NEPA review, we're really reviewing the sites and we'll get a, fine-tune the estimate after we get those results. There may be a couple of spots we don't get to put them in because they don't pass the review for whatever reason. So that's what we're really trying to do. If that's the wish of the council, I think we could look at that.
Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Darren. So we get the input from council, go back, you do this, kind of fine-tune the cost and.
We'll go, so we'll, we'll take this to the CNPO. We have to take this back. This is where the city would like to put them. I'm assuming they're gonna say, sounds great, hopefully. And then we hire a consultant to do a NEPA review at every one of these. You don't want to do a NEPA review everywhere because you don't know what you're gonna find. So you just want to do it at the ones that you specifically want to.
And then, once we get the results, so that will come back to council, so then we can report back out to council.
Right, and I mean, the estimates of four hundred thousand, they're very high level estimates. We have no idea how much the shelters are gonna be with the new regulations, all the rest of that. We, we're putting inflations on them. Maybe we get good numbers. I mean, I, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to build what we're showing with the number we have, but again, sliding that north is an option. If that's where the council's like, I think that's gonna be great, then I think it'll work out.
But my, my, the question I think Grant was asking, which I'm interested in the answer to. Is there a way to, I mean, I know you can't use the federal funds on private property. What if we had an easement from Hy-Vee? That becomes a rightful ownership of a, of a, of a property interest, even though it's not the fee title. If we had an easement from Hy-Vee and we, we did the work to fix the topographical issue.
Sure.
Could that be done?
Yeah, it can be done. Um, I would say depending on the price.
Right.
It doesn't mean that we have to do it with this project. We can do a local project that doesn't involve NEPA, that just makes it easier to.
It just, it just provides another option. I'm, I'm, I mean, I, I would be surprised if Hy-Vee said you can't have an easement.
I guess what, what I would suggest from this is we keep it, and all we're really choosing right now is where we're reviewing locations.
Okay.
And we can choose to review the, the Hy-Vee, do some figures on, all right, if that retaining wall needs to be built and we go out, then that means we gotta remove two more. That's a decision we make, right?
We can give them a little bigger.
Yeah, we can take, and we can look at that much closer.
The thing is, again, my ten years, uh, in this position, I think all of the complaints I've had about bus stops have been that one.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Well, people email me or, you know, and I think, I mean, the concrete pad's gonna help. But still, I mean, there's the complaints about, uh, 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 you know, standing in snow and standing in the rain and um, there's just not, it's not really easily, you know, it's not, it's not.
Reading through everything, I think you guys want a shelter there, so we gotta figure out how to put a shelter there.
I, I just, I'm just saying from my experience, those are, that the complaints I've gotten have been about that, that stop.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, you know, maybe it is because people have groceries or who knows, you know, it's just a more.
No, Mayor, this is great, great feedback for the team. We'll go back and, um, we'll draw the box, as Darren said, around that area, kind of look, and that will allow for some additional conversations with Hy-Vee and, and see what else can be.
And I'd be happy to help with those conversations.
Yeah, yeah. One other item I'd like to bring up on this is just to, um, so that the council understands is the, the stop at Tenth Street and Sixth Avenue would slide from Sixth Avenue to Tenth Street in front of the Heritage Center. There's no room on Sixth Avenue with the, all the improvements to stick anything there.
Yeah.
That's a big change. So I, again, the bus transit stops are fine with that. They turned there anyway, but I want to make sure the council's fine with they want a shelter showing up in front of the Heritage Center and you didn't know it was gonna be there. Do, do, does that make sense?
That was gonna be my question is how is that gonna work at that location? Because even on Tenth, it doesn't feel like there's.
We have nine feet. We have nine feet. So if we have nine feet, or it might be ten there, if we have nine feet, we can put it in there.
That's a heavily used one too.
What's that?
That's a heavily used stop.
Right, and that's why we were trying to fit one in there and we couldn't on Sixth Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just circling back on the Hy-Vee mayor, maybe it's, you know, a similar conversation that we have with Walmart.
Yeah, I mean, that was an easy conversation. Said, of course, we're willing to help and.
Yeah.
Um, you know, even though it's on, on their private property, but not part of this project and, you know, but.
Exactly.
Um, I think those. Community, um, corporate citizens, I guess you can call them, um, I think wanna be helpful and cooperative, so. Can't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, Darren, I just wanted to compliment you. You appeared to be relatively quick on the uptake of what, what we were feeling.
I, I figured it out.
So, so I agree with all the comments that have been made so far, uh, some of the same thought process I had. One thing I'd like to see before we final, make final decisions on this. As you said, you were targeting those stops with thousand, uh, people using it a year. What I'd kinda like to see is, is a chart of where are those most. Popular stops. And then how are we matching that up with? Either a bench or, uh, an, a facility there. And I'll rematch that, and again, I'm, I'm looking at that from the standpoint, so if Walmart is one of our top five or ten.
It is.
Okay, I figured it was, then I totally support, you know, the extra leg effort. And saying, let's put it to where our citizens need it, not, not just drop down way below here and said we.
Right.
We're spending the money, we wanna put it somewhere, I'd rather. Do some extra effort and, and put it in the spots where we feel the need is really there.
Yeah, as Mike makes his way through here, the vast majority of the high ride usage, except for private property, are getting covered by this. Unless there's some other reason where you just didn't have the room or anywhere to slide it. You know, anywhere even close to the stop.
Yeah, so I, I think we need to kinda.
Have that.
What I'd like to see is, is that chart, tell us where those top fifteen spots are.
Yep.
Or twenty, whatever that is, a ranking. And are we putting something there? If not, why? And maybe what options can we consider? If it's private money for a few of the sp- spots, maybe we consider something like that, but. I just wanna make sure we are. I've been after this, I've been talking about this for years, the, the need for this, so I'm glad we're doing it, I support it a hundred and fifty percent. But I also wanna make sure when we get done with it. That we feel that we have really provided a, a upgraded service for those that are using the buses.
Yeah, the private ones that would be sitting out there would be the Walmart and then, uh, the Carlson Way. Where all the improvements are going at the northeast corner, fifty-one and thirteen. Those have got a couple new stops recently, they're not approved, those, that's a private road. So those would be the three, off the top of my head, I could think of that are likely a little higher ridership that wouldn't get it with this program.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we did sit down with Cedar Rapids Transit as well.
Yeah.
At the very beginning and worked through, where are those locations? Where are the individuals when we're thinking about the headcount? Where are those locations that they participated in these locations along with the data to support it?
And then you gotta put your crystal ball on, your crystal ball hat on, and if you put these in a permanent place. That pretty much fixes the future route. That's why when we were talking to them, uh, a couple weeks ago, asking them the question, well, how often does, that's one of the reasons I was asking.
Yeah.
How often does your route change, or how often has it changed? And so that is very, obviously very important to the planning of this as well, so I mean, it, it's not totally simple. I'm not try, I'm not trying to oversimplify what's going on here, because I know there's a lot of pieces to make sure we're doing it the right way, so, alright, thanks.
Well, bottom line is, I'm glad we're finally doing it, because we did, we have been talking about it, or I think we had the project.
Money's been on the books for a while, yeah.
Yeah, planned a number of years ago, and we had the NPO money, I don't know, whatever, what, what delayed it, but, um. But anyway.
The microtransit conversation.
Oh, okay, so we're finally back on track with it, but we do wanna do it right the first time, so, alright, thank you. Oh, you have more, okay. He's grab, he's grabbing, he's grabbing his drink, so we're here.
Alright, so now we're gonna go to the south side of Marion. Um, so some of these you've already seen. Um, so obviously Twix Town here is our transfer station, already has. We have bus stops on the north side, Cedar Rapids has bus stops on the south side. We are proposing one here at Blair's Ferry and Marion Boulevard. As a, um, the full component of it. And then, uh, South Eleventh and First already has the shelter, right?
Well, they have the slab. It's a very low ridership, so it's got slab and benches, but not for riders, yeah.
And then we get down here to Grand and South Eleventh slash East Post Road. That one we're proposing, the full gamut. Um, and then Meadow Knolls.
Yes, no Meadow View.
Meadow View. Um, it actually has three stops that all have pretty high ridership. So we're actually recommending two of the three to have the full on it. And then the one that's just south at Grand already has a shelter on it as well. And then we get back up to our, our main corridor on Sixth Avenue. You know, so any questions on the south side? If we're good?
Yep.
And then we look at the east side. So again, most of them are along our, our Business one fifty-one. So at thirty-fifth, Katz Drive. Forty-fourth. Um, fiftieth. And then out on sixty-second next to Quick Star. Are the recommended locations for that. So Darren was talking about these two that are north of one fifty-one, east of thirteen. Those have high rider ships, but that's all private property up there. Any questions on any of those stops?
I don't see any.
And again, this is only a part of them, so I'll go back to this slide. So we have forty-nine transit stops in Marion. We're only looking at basically improving fifteen at this point with that amount of money. Doesn't mean we can't do more as we go. But this is at least a start. So it sounds like we got clear direction that we need to look harder at Hy-Vee. Are there any other stops that we feel? Do you feel? Uh, we can add a, a resolution or a motion? And provide that additional information, if you wanted to have an actual action item on Thursday. NPO doesn't need anything formal, but if, if whatever city council would like to. Have to make sure that you're all on the same page. Or if there's general consensus, or if Steve wants that information first with an action item on Thursday.
Well, i- if we get that information first, I think that is probably gonna show some of the top stops are gonna be Hy-Vee. Walmart. And Carlson Way. I don't have it having in front of me, I think we probably already know those are in the top ten or five.
I mean, you, you got the Walmart, um, as your apartments.
Right.
That already has one there.
That has one.
Seventh Avenue, Thirty-Fifth Street, the Lynnmar Crosswalk. Meadow View, Sixth Avenue and Twenty-second, Sixth Avenue and Tenth Street. Meadow View and East Post, the Hy-Vee driveway then is down there around eight or nine. Then is the Carlson Way, the private, where we can't put one there. Um, Sixth Avenue, they, well, they call it Sixth Avenue, Seventh Avenue Roundabout. We're sticking one there, it's actually the East Roundabout, I'm going by the names that they use at the transit, so. Um, North Gateway, so the vast majority of these we are doing, and I can prep by that list to you.
Right.
Where I called out, what, what, based off the criteria, what's the room that we have from back of curb and sidewalk? Is it a residential lot? You know, how many riders do they have, all the rest of that good stuff. Yeah.
We will send out an email that has that information along with, uh, from the prior conversation. So, uh, expect that probably tomorrow, uh, or, uh, before the end of the week.
But Thursday, we could just add a motion concurring with stop locations, and then we can talk about it on Thursday. It's not needed.
No, but if, if you're comfortable after I send that with the locations, that's really what we need, is to take that CPO and just to do the NIPA. And then again, it'll come back with the actual project.
I mean, I.
That'll take a while, NIPA will, so.
From my perspective, locations, I'm trusting you guys, you know, interesting, you know, the. Your expertise and, and the transit.
We had a committee, we had.
Expertise.
All the department.
Yeah, it's just, it's just that the, the, the level, uh, uh, of, of stop at the Hy-Vee was the concern for me. So as long as you're taking care of that, that's all.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with Nick a hundred percent there too, that, you know, I think we need to proceed. As you recommend to get these transit stops in there. And if there are some of these on private property, we know that means more effort, more time. Maybe that becomes a separate, uh, effort. On how we proceed with that, what the timeframe might be, uh, maybe that's more, uh. Not CNPO money, but some other funding source that we think is important for that, and we can make that decision later, but. I think you've probably given us the lion's share of what we need.
I don't, I don't believe we need to add anything to Thursday's agenda. I think we've got the consensus, we know the, the one that we've gotta look at, and, and we'll, we'll come back as we continue to work this process.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. One more question.
Yeah.
Well, so as we go through this process, the one thing we haven't talked about is what might be the timing of, and I. You may not even have the answer, is there, do you have any indication of when these might be able to be installed? Any guess?
I, I don't know how long the NIPA's gonna take, and I don't know how long it's gonna do the Buy America, Build Amer- all that.
Right.
I mean, my goal would be next year, but I don't, I don't, there's a lot of unknowns.
Okay, so it's a twenty-six installation.
If we, if this wasn't federal dollars, it guaranteed would, but I don't know going through that how long it's gonna take, so.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. Next we have the agenda review. First item that's marked for discussion by staff is A nine on the, on the page mark, page five. Um, anything prior to A nine? Okay, then A nine, Brian?
Yep, thank you, Mayor, uh, really, just, um, back in February, the, the city council, uh, created and appointed a subcommittee. Uh, regarding the landfill to gather some necessary information on it. Um, you know, as we've been hearing from the landfill agency, um, the, the landfill's at capacity. Um, council pointed that, the information's been gathered, so at this point, there's no longer a need to have that committee in place, so. Uh, recommending that we dissolve the landfill committee and then, um, just, um. We'll continue to have conversations, uh, with the agency on next steps and with respect to the landfill. So this is just a formal, formal step on Thursday to dissolve that subcommittee.
Questions, pretty straightforward. Okay, thanks, Ryan. Um, next item is D one at the bottom of the page, anything prior to D one?
There.
Yeah.
Go back.
Yeah. Hey, you bet.
A four, chief. How many firefighters are you looking to hire? I mean, are you down a lot?
Uh, we are, um, we're down one that we're currently holding for a civil service appeal. Um, so right now we are authorized forty-seven sworn, and we have forty-six hired. So again, just one that we're holding depending on a civil service appeal.
Gotcha, so the, the, the list, you're only hiring one off of this list, basically?
Potentially one.
Potentially, yes, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything prior to D one? Then we'll go to D one, Mike.
Yes, John, or so for, uh, D one, uh, we met over a couple meetings to talk about, uh, the Public Works Board. Um, and essence, a lot of what they were doing was only detention basins, so. When a plan of improvements is done, so think the subdivision is graded, all the utilities are in, and houses start to get built. We accept all the improvements. They leave the detention basin under their maintenance, until which time all the houses that would drain to that are accepted and built. And at that time, we actually accept the basin after we inspect it. So that's really the only thing that the board was doing, was accepting those detention basins. Um, so they didn't feel like there was a lot. Uh, a big conversation as part of that was. The council that they have now, the staff that they have now feel that we are all very open. And the, the community, the residents, visitors can all come, we're all approachable, we take care of things. But should that change in the future with different staff or different council? They saw the need of maybe having the public board, board come back at that time to help be that intermediary. To try and get stuff done if that, for some reason, were to happen, was their only concern. But at this point, they saw no concern with that.
Questions, go ahead.
So this is maybe a question for Holly. Is, are public works boards specified anywhere in Iowa code? And if so, are they elective to the municipality?
They are not in the Iowa code that I'm aware of, so it's something that you are just selecting to have a city of Marion.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mike. Next item is D five on the next page, anything prior to D five? Hey, Mike, D five?
Yeah, so for D five, they did write a petition, um, requesting to add curb and gutter to Twenty-Fifth Avenue. Uh, Twenty-Fifth Avenue is a street this year that we did an HMA overlay, and this is actually a photo after we overlaid that street. Um. If we were to do that, and I know Councilman Harper and Deputy Director Downs has reached out to several of the residents. Uh, about this. If we were to put new curb and gutter on every street that we do an HMA overlay on. We would only be able to do about half the streets that we do today. So. We do have a curb program, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And so we typically couple it with our storm sewer project. So last year, we did Twenty-Fourth Avenue from Twenty-seventh Street to Thirty-first Street on the south side. And we did Twenty-seventh Avenue and Twenty-seventh Street on the south side. Um. On that project, because when we're digging a trench right at that back of curb, then it tends to cave in. And so then we can pay for it with those curb and gutter funds. Um, so our recommendation at this point is there is curb and gutter, and there you can see it in the picture. There might be places where it's less, it gets beat up with the snow plows. When you have a six-inch curb and gutter and you overlay it with a couple inches, now you're down to four inches. If it's what we call California curb or slope curb, it might only be two or three inches. And so when you overlay it, then there isn't a curb left, we don't actually allow the California curb or the slope curb anymore. Um, and then when we do a complete reconstruction, obviously we're putting new curb and gutter in there. Or as we're doing projects where we need to, we're putting that curb and gutter back. So because they received and filed this, we wanted to make sure it came to city council, so you could see that. Um, if there's additional questions, um, I'm happy to answer those, but we feel we're doing the most that we can with the money that we have. To, to get that base level covered and to get another twenty years out of that life of that pavement.
Questions? Sarah, and then we'll go, Craig.
Just as a note, as you probably know this, and for our colleagues, there's a bunch of us there that day, but this initial conversation started at a. Um, Saturday morning farmer's market, um, the resident who started the petition approached to have the conversation on that Saturday morning, so. Does help to, we are, we are picking up conversations on different topics, even if it's sometimes answers that. Aren't what folks wanna hear, but at least we're kind of. Answering the questions or providing some feedback and information, but distinctly remember having this conversation and then. You two were there too.
Yeah, right, so Mike, I think the thing I learned out of this and just confirmed that my understanding is correct, but. Our HMA program, uh, in part helps to protect the integrity of the subsurface. For a longer period of time.
Correct.
And the other thing I think I learned is that, um, principal trigger. To considering doing the curb and gutter is if we then have to get into the subsurface utilities, the sewer and water.
Correct, so like when we're installing the, the drain tile, that's right at the back of curb, and that's when sometimes we have it sloughing off. Depending on how the joints are. Um, obviously, if we're replacing the sanitary sewer that typically goes down the center of the street. Um, it's a full reconstruction.
Right.
Um, or if the water department's putting in new water and they get too close to the curb and gutter, then they might have to do a curb and gutter project as part of that. If the street is caving in on, so, yeah, it's typically more the other utilities versus the street. This is providing a good surface that's gonna last at least twenty years, uh, for all the residents that are driving on this.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Well, sorry. It's fine. I was a little confused on this one, um. When reading the petition, I don't recall it actually saying where on Twenty-Fifth. Like if there was a specific section or what was wrong with the curbs in that area that they were requesting this. Was that anywhere in the petition at all, or did I just, did I just miss it?
I provided you everything that they provided.
Okay, so I don't, what section was this even of Twenty-Fifth? And what was the wrong with the curves, or what is wrong with the curves? Did anybody know?
So I, I did meet with, um, a couple of the residents, uh, who reached out. So I I did meet with um, a couple of the residents uh, who reached out to me. And I met with them and we did a bit of a walk down from Indian Creek Road uh, onto the east, probably about three quarters of a block, that's as far as.
There.
And, you know, there are, a- as Mike represented, there's places where either the curb is cracked. Or it's been um, uh, scooped out by plows or whatever, and it's just naturally cracked just due to our, the change in weather, so. Um, you know, uh, it's, it's not in the best of condition, but. You know, Mike, I can, in confirming my understandings, that's kind of what I relayed to them when I was, I I met with them. Um, so it, the the time really is, and maybe this is a communication standpoint. If we're planning to do an HMA on a given street. Um, we, we may, maybe part of this is um. I- if there's any, any residential input on on that kind of a project, at least we hear it way early versus. We're already laying down asphalt, because at that point, the project, we can't, we can't even entertain. Is it valid to do anything else? So uh, it's a, it's a matter of the timing of collecting any potential input that's worthwhile.
Yeah, we, we can, we do send a a letter out to all the residents, and then we do require. In this case, it's Pelling, to go and do door hangers to let them know when the work is actually going to happen. We can review that letter, uh, go over with Amber and see if there's a better way to phrase it, if there's not something in there about the curb and gutter.
Yeah, maybe that's happening and I just don't have visibility to it.
That'd be a good change.
Okay. Alright, next item is A two, uh, anything prior to A two? Hey, Rachel?
Uh, this ordinance is related to a change with Iowa code. Um, bill SF three oh three was approved by the governor, so this bill prohibits. Local governments from restricting consumer fireworks on July third, fourth, and December thirty-first. Um, so shown would be the changes that we need to make in our code.
And that's just to bring it into compliance with the state.
Correct.
Okay, and we're going to very clearly uh, notify our residents.
That this is not in our control anymore. It'll be on Facebook and update our website.
Okay.
In focus.
We communicate very well in lots of ways, so I'm hoping this will be one of those communications so that people understand.
Yeah, this, the, again, I I'll put it on record on Thursday as well. But again, in my opinion, this is just another fine example of our legislatures in Des Moines watering down the home rule. Where cities cannot make the decisions that they feel are in the best interest of their citizens. And regardless of whether we want to have fireworks, or like Cedar Rapids where you don't want to have fireworks. Home rule should be used, and Des Moines has taken that away.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, the rest of the agenda is not marked for discussion. Anything, any questions on anything else on the agenda before we go to the closed session? Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Here, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section twenty-one point. Five, one J of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It has been moved in second it to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under the Code of Iowa. May we have the legal counsel's statement, please?
Yes, I've reviewed the uh, subject matter of the closed session and believe it is appropriate for closed session under the. Uh, section provided in the agenda.
Okay, thank you for that, any discussion before we vote? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Mayor Abbo Osley?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Okay, we are now adjourned to closed session, thank you for joining us, we'll see everyone on Thursday.